Call to order the Claremore Cultural Development Authority. Sarah, here.
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 Michael.
Present.
Callender.
Long.
Here.
Bruckerhoff.
Here.
Bowlby.
Here.
McSpadden.
Here.
Irwin.
Here.
If you'll stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Pastor Dave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Debbie. Do you value that you can see with prayer? Father, what an honor it is to open chambers meeting tonight with a word of prayer. Father, we just are thanking you for so many things, but the issue tonight is that we have come to do business. Business, Lord God, is something that you're about as well. We love this city. We love the things that we're doing. We're passionate about the things that we will be talking about tonight. But we pray for your will. We pray for your peace over everything that we do. Lord, we're grateful that Claremore is a place that we see people loving and they're drawn here. And we just pray for its growth, its progress, its process. And we pray, Lord Jesus, for you to just bless everything that we do here tonight. In Jesus's name, amen. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
At least let me get to the truck before you start talking itself.
Okay, call to the public. Do we have anybody to speak in public?
We have Peggy Miller. Make your way to the podium, Ms. Miller.
Well, that's Peggy Miller. I own the office there. It crosses the street from the church. And I'm protesting about them closing gyms off. We went through this well over 15 years ago. And at that time, I was a council member of the first time this church. So they kind of said the rules, but they did with the law. They know they still have clothes there. And right now, I guess when they close, there's not that much traffic. They go on them. And anything they can, I make sure because I don't pay for it. What is surprising is the church says, well, let the city keep taking care of the streets, city curves and everything like that. Now, if they're closing, it's theirs. It's not the city's. I was there a few weeks ago to see the church closes some of the people leave. What you need to do is put something on road watches because all the people just stream out of the church. Some wait for cars, some don't. So the city wants to put a stoplight up there. And maybe it'll save somebody. It's called checkers off. Being dangerous for people is not. It's been like that for about 20 years. I don't know how long. But I protest that closing because the office, I know, gives people a street to come to play. I guess that's all I got to tell you there. The first stoplight on road watches. Because we'll go down and watch sometime at 12 o'clock and see the people coming out. That's all.
I don't think we did the. Are you sure? Oh, yeah, one more. You didn't have one more? I just want to make sure we covered it. Sorry. We normally cover the guidelines to speak and go ahead.
Who else is coming up?
Pete Wiggington.
Mr. Wiggington, I didn't cover it with the previous speaker, which is my own fault. We have some pretty minimal guidelines for public comment. Our public comment is limited to three minutes per person. And because this is a public meeting called under the Open Meeting Act, you can address the council. You can share your thoughts. But if you ask questions, council members can't answer. They can't engage with you.
Sure.
You'll hear there's a timer going for the three minutes. So if that goes off, that's how you know your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I noticed we were number six on the agenda, so I didn't know that I'd be up this fast. But I first want to just say that I appreciate Mrs. Miller. We've spoken a couple of times. I appreciate her position. I understand it. I would also say that we have hundreds and hundreds of people that cross that street every week. The other thing is next month will be 12 years that I've been here. We've had about a half a dozen times trucks have hit the bridge. And then the other thing that I want to bring up is there's the potential of a quiet zone here. But for that to happen, we're going to have to shut off this side of our parking lot. And we would need to come in through that side of the street on this edge over here. So it is very much a safety issue for us. It would be, we understand the utilities. We understand we can't mess with those things. We don't want to mess with those things. We have spoken to people at the Presbyterian Church and Funeral Home. We've spoken to people in these office buildings over here. And they, none of them had any complaints about this at all. And unfortunately, it has been closed for 14 months. I don't know if that's a good indicator, but it already has been closed. So truthfully, 27 years ago, when they built this building, I wish they'd have done this then and not done the bridge. But this is where we're at. And so we're just, we've worked on this for several years. We've had every department out to check everything. This is a long process. It's not something on the fly. And we appreciate your consideration. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Any other? Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second. A motion second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen? Under current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items?
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Did you both do that? You sounded exactly alike. Is that the same? Sorry. Have a motion to adjourn the second. Call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cottam. Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore Public Works Authority. Note the roll. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Oh, my gosh, you guys are going to throw me off. Have a motion second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
So Jonathan, if you want to throw your voice in there too, that might help. Any items unforeseen?
None.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion to adjourn the second. Call the roll.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore City Council meeting. Note the roll. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Bowlby.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Mayor's report. It's hot outside. That's what I'm going to say. Under awards, presentations, and communications, Mr. Manager.
I'll go ahead before we have these first two and just remind everybody at home and here that we are unfortunately finally going to start experiencing some triple-digit heat. We've been blessed to not have it this early or this late end of the summer. But please be mindful that we've already had some employees with some dehydration issues. Even though we take every precaution, it's that hot out there. And when you put on extra gear, especially our linemen, our firefighters, our police officers. So pray for their safety, but also at home while you're doing stuff in the yard, be mindful. It can sneak up on you real easy, especially when you have the humidity that we do. Reminder that in two weeks' time, at the next meeting, we will have CEC presenting to the council the findings of the comprehensive electric system evaluation. So tonight, you're going to hear from Garber on some wastewater stuff. And then in a couple of weeks, you'll hear on electric. Surprisingly pleased with the outcomes of both. But as with anything that we do, they come with large price tags. So, and other than that, I will be leaving tomorrow evening to go to Lawton, of all places, for the City Managers Association of Oklahoma Conference. I made the mistake of asking Michelle to register me for it. And then after she did, I said, where is it? She goes, it's in Lawton. And I go, can we cancel? So not that I don't love my friends in Lawton. That is just a long, warm drive. So Stan Brown will be the acting city manager or the city manager. Fill those roles while I'm out. And should hopefully be back Friday if I don't get too antsy and just leave Thursday night. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item number one, Claremore Water Waste Master Plan. Mr. Helvick.
And Garrett.
And Garrett. And Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Here to present the findings of the wastewater master plan. Actually started this study back in fiscal year 22, 23. Taking a while to get all the data collected, do all the modeling. So I want to introduce Thomas Helvick with Garber. He's going to walk you through the findings and recommendations moving forward.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come here and speak on this master plan. As mentioned, my name is Thomas Helvick. I'm the project manager for Garber on our water team in Oklahoma.
We need permission. That's not the right one. The ones that I had. Yeah, this is Maggie's, right? That's the only two. I'm sorry, don't have it.
Do we have an access? Is it on the server?
I will check.
Would you like to come back in two weeks?
If you want to do Maggie's, we can follow that up.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll just switch. Switch. So Claremore Economic Development Quarterly Update, Miss Nager.
I have hers up here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all know, per our contract, we come before you once a quarter, not to present a whole scope, but per your discussion, kind of focus in. And so tonight's focus will be the Claremore Regional Airport. As you all hopefully recall, about 18 months ago, we made some really strategic shifts in the focus of the airport, where its vision is, as it had come upon its 30 years of history in Claremore, and where we kind of headed for the next 30. And so very proud of the work that we've kind of achieved over the last 18 months. So with that, I will let the airport manager, Colby Linder, come up and share a few updates with you all.
Good afternoon. Colby Linder, the airport manager out at our airport here. Been here for a little over a year. Can't believe it's already been a year. See some new faces. So nice to meet you all, the ones that I remember from last year. Nice to see you again. I'll get right into a kind of quick, high-level overview here. We have a lot of awesome things happening at our airport. A lot of things that have been completed that are true milestones for our airport. In that being, one of the big ones, a couple of the big ones that we've got completed here was an FBO remodel. So FBO stands for fixed base operator. Think of a gas station, but aviation, right? So we offer all the services that you'd see on a gas station, plus fuel, all that. We have the luxury of owning and operating our FBO. A lot of perks to that. We had our FBO that was originally built in the late 90s, still looked like it was in the late 90s. So we were fortunate to come into some funding there and kind of revamp it and make it a nice, comfortable place for pilots to come in, especially on days like today when it's really hot. A lot of these aircraft do not have air conditioning. Imagine flying in these things, sweating, trying to get where you're going. It's nice to stop, be able to use clean restrooms, get a bottle of water, cool off, watch some TV. So we put a lot of work into that, getting it up to speed, especially with the state's focus on FBOs and kind of getting them up to modern day because a lot of FBOs are still left back in time. It's the first and last impression of an airport. So we wanted to showcase Claremore to where we get people returning because of our facilities. So that's a nice one that we have been able to complete. In addition to that, we finished our commercial box hangar project, which you'll see there at the bottom right of the picture. That is a 6,000-square-foot hangar that will allow us additional space, which is very difficult to come into in aviation, especially in our region. Every single airport out there has a waitlist for aircraft. Being able to capitalize and get a space such as this puts us that much ahead of our competitors in this, but also continues our partnerships with our tenants on field. So that one was a long, stringent process. We're very happy that it's done. It's a very pretty building. We're excited to get it up and running and kind of take that and continue on with more buildings there for aircraft. One of my proudest ones year-to-date is the JAA refueling. So last year, we had approved the purchase of the JAA refueling. So what that is, is it's a truck that contains JAA. So think of your turbine engines. They run off of JAA. One of the services that is highly sought after with JAA is what we call full service. So you wheel the truck around and will actually fill the aircraft to where a lot of these people that come in, they don't want to do that, right? They paid a lot of money to fly these planes to get from point A to point B. Last thing they want to do is be on heat, hooking up hoses, smelling like fuel, going to meetings and smelling like fuel. So we offer that service. Our current JAA refueling that we operate out of is 1985. So it just kind of screams all kinds of things in addition to old and tired. So we had originally budgeted for this. I had went down to the state Capitol and spoke on behalf of our airport for a 50-50 match on the refueling with the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics. We were thankful to be awarded that. So we took that initial cost and cut it in half, saving the airport, saving the city some money there so that we didn't have to affront that full cost. So very happy for that. We should be seeing it in October. Very excited for that. We currently operate out of our truck with no air conditioning, no heat. So those two things alone, I know myself and the guys are very excited for.
Go to the next person.
Next one?
Yes, please. So there's a couple of pictures there for you. That's the inside of our FBO. As you can see, nice and clean, updated, our conference room. On the bottom left, there has been a huge hit that allows people to come in and do their flight training, which we get a lot of. We'll have instructors come through with students and be able to sit down right there, post-flight, pre-flight, discuss things that they want to see happen during or after, things they need to work on, or you know what, you did great, let's sign papers, let's get out of here. That's been a big hit. But it also allows kind of some of our business-minded customers to come through. And it's essentially a meeting point, right? They don't have to go all the way to where they need to go, and the other people don't have to go all the way to them. So a nice luxury there in addition to just kind of updating everything else. So top left there, that's the main entry. That really just kind of your hangout place. We normally have the weather on. And then you'll see that screen off to the left there in the black. That's what's called our AWOS. It is all the aeronautical weather that pilots will need for their flight planning and everything. So able to get that out there nice and easy for them to see. Top right there, we have updated our concessions to a nice, cleaner look. And then bottom right, that is what we call the pilot's lounge. We get pilots that come through. They may bring people in and they may hang out like us for most of the day. And so this is a place for them to come in, kick back, relax. We find guys sleeping back there all the time, waiting on the passengers to come back through. So I really appreciate that because that's what it was built for. So letting those guys be able to rest and get these people where they need to be safely is a good spot to have.
Next move.
So as I said, there's a lot of good things on the horizon for our airport in that we purchased 40 acres a few years ago. It's off to the northeast of our layout there. That is allowing us to expand our operations. We currently have a hangar waitlist of about 40 individuals. We're in Claremore without them.
Trying to avoid a three-train meeting, Colby.
We currently have about 40 individuals that have expressed interest on wanting Claremore to be their home for their aircraft. With those 40 acres, it allows us to develop further, make more buildings, improve our facility, improve our space for these aircraft to come in. Every aircraft is fuel sales, which means more money in the airport's bank account, boasting our airport down much higher. So acquiring that 40 acres was awesome. We are working with our team of engineers over at Garber to kind of master plan that and see what we can truly do there. There's some areas that are a little difficult to get around that aren't fit for aeronautical needs. But we have a pretty good layout of what the next 20-plus years looks like. Very excited for that, get that rolling. Because like I said, hangar space is a hot commodity right now. I get multiple calls a day just asking if somebody has a place to store their aircraft. In addition to that, I just finished up our five-year capital improvement plan. We do this on a yearly basis. The conversation I had with our engineers went much like, what does it look like to scrap what we have and start all fresh? And they said, actually, we would love to do that. So we took a hard look at where the airport's at and what it needs. And we were able to come up with about $13, well over $13 million in improvements. Now, that comes from a plethora of grants and other funding opportunities. It's not all on the city of Claremore's dime or the city's dime. There's a lot of different ways, as you saw with the JAA, they're a 50-50 match with them. A lot of opportunities there. These improvements are anything from refuelers to maintaining our runway taxiways so that they are in top operating condition. The last thing you want is to have a surface that is not ideal and then you run into an aircraft accident. That is a huge no-go. We also have a lot of infrastructure challenges that we're facing. So working through all that, all this kind of funneled into that $13 million there. And that, like I said, is over the next five years, and it's nothing set in stone. That's just the projects we would like to see, the projects we have advocated to the state and to the FAA. This is what we need, and this is what we need to do to get these done. In addition to that, we did start a new texting service. It has gone over awesome with our tenants and anybody that comes through. So we posted all over our FBO there that anybody that wants to sign up for updates, we send them out periodically, anything from, we have a new tenant, to what the runway taxiway looks like whenever it's snowing, raining, if we have any type of closures, if there's anything wonky going on the airfield. And then kind of a more refined group with our base tenants to be able to tell them, hey, we need to see this, or notice this with your hangar, is everything okay? So it's really opened up that channel of communication that has been received very well. In addition to all of those, we did update our standard operating procedures just to make sure we're covered and buttoned up there, operating as we should be. We also have improved our airfield training manual. We also have improved our airfield training manual, which now consists of us going out, daily inspections, checking the runway, checking, checking the taxiways, going around the hangars, making sure everything looks in place. I always tell the guys each morning after they get it done, is the airfield still there? And they always tell me yes. So I think we're doing a good job there. Going along with the training, we have also implemented part 139 fuel training. We, I don't want to get too far in the weeds. We are not required by the FAA to do part 139 training. That's what you would find at a commercial service operation. However, it is not a bad practice to over-train on fuel. There are so many instances when things can go wrong. That truck right there in the picture holds 3,000 gallons of fuel. You imagine one spark, one wrong thing, it, it could be detrimental quick. So having the most trained professionals when it comes to fueling, quality control, that is top priority when it comes to our fueling. So we stepped it up a notch and went full blown, full scale on our, on our fuel training there.
Next slide please.
And that is all that I have. I will open it up for questions, comments, concerns.
I know you said that there's a 40 waitlist for if, once it's developed or not. The box hangers run it out. It's like fully at capacity before we even build them.
Right. I wasn't here whenever those were built, but I was told that they were filled within an hour. It did not take long at all.
Yeah, I think when Maggie announced within an hour, they were all spoken for and deposits in hand for 10-unit T-hangers. So you could prop, on that 40 acres, conservatively with taxiways, you could probably put 20 more of those.
So our plan now, if you've ever seen an aerial of an airport, is to kind of mimic what we currently have. T-hangers are awesome because they allow a lot of aircraft in one building. So picture a T, right? And that's all it is. You're going to be able to snug the tail end up to the wingtips and then that's all that you're storing. So mimicking that, we currently have a row of three different sets of T-hangers. Mimic that over and over and over again and then sprinkle in some private hangers that are about 3,600 square feet that can accommodate a little bit larger aircraft. Just keep, keep kind of what we have going is kind of the plan there.
Toby, could you or Maggie talk about the importance of a quality airport when we're recruiting new businesses to come into town? Because I know Maggie's working with business industry from all over the country and sometimes all over the world. So you, you mentioned this is a great first impression now. How, how critical is this for recruiting new businesses?
Absolutely. Love the question and I'll let Maggie speak a little bit on it if she wants to. From an airport standpoint, like I said, we are the first and last impression of Claremore. If those people come in and they, they fly in, they go to their meeting and then they leave out of Claremore, if they, their trip can start bad with us or it can start good with us. They can go and have a great meeting and then come back and have terrible service. They're going to remember that terrible service. So we do not take it lightly whenever I say that we are the first and last impression of the airport. So having those top notch facilities from our FBO remodel to everything just nice, clean, welcoming, all the way down to our fuel trucks, our runways, taxiways, having those in top notch conditions, not only is good for the passenger because one, they're being safe, they know they're being safe, right? You see a nice new fuel truck blowing up, you see new amenities, you see a friendly staff walking up to you, greeting you. But also from a pilot perspective, not many pilots are going to go into an airport that has a deteriorating, deteriorating runway or an old squeaky fuel truck that pulls up, right? You're going to start questioning safety concerns. And so that's kind of what we're tailored, our vision on is safety and customer service, making sure that we are hitting those aspects and always remembering that the airport is the first and the last thing that these people will remember as they come into Claremore. So I will speak highly of my staff because we get comments all the time that people that didn't know that we existed, they came through, enjoyed their visit, enjoyed the facilities, enjoyed just kind of the shop talk, right? Just hanging out and welcoming these people and, and kind of learning something about them and something about us. And it, it's always the last comment, we will definitely be back. We are so glad that we found you guys. It's a nice little hidden gem. The nice thing about our airport is we are not as big as Tulsa International Riverside. So it's very easy, very convenient for these guys to come in from a passenger and a pilot perspective. Pilots, right, they, they want to get in, they want to land, they want to get their passengers on to deal with whatever so they can get it back to the pilot's lounge and kick back, relax, eat the chips and hang out. Passenger wise, they don't have to wait anywhere, right? They don't have to wait on a, on a taxiway for the control tower to clear them, to get them going somewhere. They can literally fly in, land, by the time they are landing on the runway to the time they're on the ramp and we're welcoming, welcoming them, you're looking at two to three minutes. And then they're on to doing whatever they're doing. But that, that is our, our, one of our main focuses is making sure that we hold that impression to the highest standard possible.
Yeah, I would just add to that, you all know that Claremore geographically sits within the proximity of Oklahoma's two mega sites, in Pryor and Anola. And so in addition to our own, we often see companies or executives or site selectors tend to scope out a community about 18 to 12 months before they actually look to locate here. And so it was really interesting as I spent some time in a little more detail at the airport a year ago, is we had individuals stopping in representing a company to our airport unbeknownst to the community. And so the experience they received there not only supports Claremore, but also the region and knowing those executives come to town. And so there have been a number of announcements in the region in Tulsa, they're flying into Claremore's airport. We know they have choices between a number that sit within the area. And so that allows us then the opportunity for sales, tax and avaloir contributions back. And so it's that, that whole economic development cycle, right, that goes into that. And so ensuring that they have that quality opportunity, as, as Toby and his team have created, is beyond critical. It's not just, hey, where did I come from? What did I do? Last year alone, we had over 400 zip codes from outside of Oklahoma visit our airport. And so it is important to know where that's coming from and how we can kind of capitalize on that for our future as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Excellent presentation.
All right.
Oh my gosh.
So back to item number one, Claremore wastewater master plan. Garrett and Mr. Helbin.
All right. Sorry about the delay. We get lost inside. There we go.
This is riveting stuff, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you guys for your questions. Yeah, so happy to be here today. As I mentioned, my name is Thomas Helbin, project manager for Garver's Paddle Water Team. And so you can go on to the next. Today, we're just going to quickly go over the master plan, recap what that was, what we're doing, go over the collection system, CIP, the wastewater treatment plant, CIP, and then some next steps for the city that you guys can take. And so as Garrett mentioned, this project started in '22. It's been a, a long process, a good process with the city staff going through, making sure we understand their needs, collecting data and then coming up with a plan for your future wastewater needs. Can you go on to the next? So a master plan is developed through a process of tasks that point to a capital improvement plan. So that's really our goal. Start at the beginning, we go through collecting data, we build a hydraulic model, we define what your future flows and allocated wastewater flows are for your city. We analyze those and what gaps you have, what, what your future needs are going to need. And then we work with the city to identify and prioritize your CIP so that you have a useful roadmap to follow over the next 20 years. Go to the next. And so as I mentioned, we, we had this master plan split up into two different sections. We have a collection system for your pipes, your lift stations. And then we also have a wastewater treatment plant by direction. So if we look at the collection system, capital improvement plan, and go on to the next one. There are 12 lines that we were able to identify that need to be improved throughout your system. This map shows kind of a high level of where those are located. We've named them with fancy tags as engineers are very fancy. We WW09, WW08, not very original, but it is effective in prioritizing those. And so this was one way we could look at it, right? If you go on to the next option, there was another option that we were able to do and that's shown in option two. And as you can see, it moves a lot of the improvement over to this eastern interceptor. And you guys can see there's a significant cost with that, but if we go on to the next slide, why would you want to do that? This does come at a cost, but it allows you to expand your sewer service area into that area. It also has an improved constructability, so.
What, what area is that that we're looking at?
East, the eastern side of town.
That's basically along, or Dog Creek.
So here's your quick trip counselor?
Yeah.
So if you see all those labels on there, Oakwood, Oakwood 3rd, Harfland, those are all lift stations? Where we actually have to collect the sewer, pump it back to the gravity line, or a gravity line at some location. So we've got mechanical lift stations at all those points. One of the big advantages would be the elimination of those lift stations. So everything with gravity down to one lift station would be pumped to the plant. Be a huge, a huge reduction in maintenance and operational cost improvements. A lot of those lift stations are at or near capacity, close to needing to be major upgrades done. It would be hugely beneficial from that side of town.
The addition of capacity lift stations is probably one of the most expensive things you could do outside of a building because you're not just up sizing pumps and BFDs, you're talking about wet wells. I mean, it, it is a. And so that's one of the considerations we had for this was how do we eliminate long-term future maintenance and this, this fixes the capacity issue too.
Yeah, and so in many studies, you can see that the lifecycle costs of operating and maintaining different equipment and different lift stations is normally about 80% of the total lifecycle cost as compared to the 20% of actually putting the, the infrastructure in there. So when, in doing this alternative, you would remove eight lift stations that you wouldn't have to be maintaining any longer and building one large regional lift station to collect all of that and take it to your wastewater plant.
And almost unquantifiable dollars to maintain those forever. I mean, there's, you can pick a price tag and it's still not going to be enough.
So yeah, that's where the, the master plan ended up and the CIP. Both alternatives were delivered. And like I mentioned previously, there was a cost associated with those. Now we can get through what that means for the city later in the presentation. Go on to the next one. Yeah, go ahead.
Is somebody driving a blue Ford Edge? The, the, the door is wide open, sir. We'll, we'll grab it. Maggie, we just, if you're, I just want to make sure that. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
No, absolutely. Okay, and as we move into the wastewater treatment plant, capital improvement plan, we were able to, to walk the plant with your city staff, go over the needs that they have, look at the data and again, go through that gap analysis process to determine what improvements were needed over the next 20 years. So if you go into the next one. Again, we, we prioritize these in a, a particular way. So the CIP recommendations were based on phasing. So in this case, we looked at near-term phasing. Those are critical conditions and existing capacity gaps that we found with your infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant. And then the intermediate, those were being proactive with some things that were, had some wear, some things that were starting to age that we'd likely need to replace in the next X amount of years, likely over five, probably under 10 years. And then when we look at long-term, these are a little bit harder to define with a wastewater treatment plant. It's largely driven on how much growth happens. And we really want to move you away from years on this phase, but more look at like a triggered capacity of actual flows at the wastewater treatment plant for these items. If you go on to the next. So near-term improvements included expanding the influent flow handling capacity and replacing malfunctioning equipment. So as we went through, there are several redundant items, backup blowers, backup pumps that were down, needed maintenance at the time that we were walking the site with plants. So we were able to list those here. But, but the large improvement that we're seeing here and where the biggest gap came from was an influent lift station. So all the flow from the city that's being pumped and gravity into the plant comes to a influent lift station, collects and then pumps to the head of the plant. This influent lift station currently is grossly undersized, often at full capacity, running beyond its design life. And then also we'd want to have a robust screening facility there to, to protect the pump and protect everything downstream at the plant. A lot of trash gets into wastewater and it can cause major issues as they get into, to pumps and screens, blowers. So don't want to have, don't want to have those come through.
We've literally found shopping carts, basketball goals. I mean, it's amazing what gets into these things.
Alligators.
Beach balls.
And so if we go on to the next, we're looking at the intermediate improvements. These enhance the site maintenance capabilities and expand disinfection capacity. So again, looking at a couple of things that had some wear, probably going to, to need to be looked at. The big one here is expanding your disinfection. And we looked at a couple of alternatives in the master plan for alternatives to disinfection here. But ultimately, we're seeing in the next five to 10 years, there's probably need to, to consider doing some upgrades to your disinfection system. And then lastly, as we go to the, the long-term improvements, these are driven by, by growth and capacity needs. So now we're looking at new aeration basins, looking at additional blowers, primary clarifiers. And you guys can see them here, largely the plant, the plant process needing to improve, enlarge that so that you have the ability to treat the wastewater that we're projecting in the next X number of years. So the total cost of the recommended improvements to wastewater treatment plant are approximately $46.6 million in today's money. And you can see how they're, how they're broken out here with a lot of that coming in the near-term with the inflow pump station and screenings facility. The intermediate isn't as much. Like I said, these are, are smaller maintenance items. And then long-term, we have a, a pretty big plant expansion that we'd have to account for to get the, the treatment required. And so also part of this master plan kind of is a, another way to look at this, knowing that the city is growing, looking at some development in the southwest region. A regional lift station was proposed for handling flows from the future southwest service area. We looked at that and, and really with a lot of the near-term things needing and not able to, to fully take those needs away, it doesn't make as much sense right now. But again, if we see large growth coming, then of course we could, could revisit it. The, the idea here is as you experience growth, let's, let's build a large regional lift station. Let's collect it there and that will likely serve as the influent pump station and screening facility if there was a future southwest wastewater treatment plant. Right now, probably does not make financial sense to, to go ahead and build that plant with the needs at the existing plant as well. And so as we, we go on to the next steps, I mentioned we're, we came up with a few with the city that we could do. Again, these would help reduce some of these numbers and move them away from purely planning numbers and start getting into some design numbers here if we go to the next step. So there, there's a few studies we could look at further refining the eastern interceptor, develop a preliminary engineering report. This would look at, you know, what easements are required, look at actual alignments that we would do. What, what kind of pumps would we size this with, really getting in. into the, the details of that design, which ultimately will, will help drive a, uh, more accurate number, um, for funding purposes. Um, as we mentioned, this was a twenty-twenty-two project, uh, and some of the data that we were using there was even older than that. Uh, and so in order for us to do this, uh, we, uh, had to look at this rainfall, uh, analysis, uh, and that could be, um, renewed so that you can, uh, further define what the limits of those collection system improvements were. Without a really defined study, we weren't able to, to tighten those limits. We really just anywhere that, that trunk line captured it, uh, we needed to do an improvement.
He's talking about a study that was done like twenty-fifteen on rainfall effect on the wastewater collection system.
And then along with that, the targeted sanitary sewer evaluation survey, again, looking at, at where you're having major overflows, uh, further reducing the limits of that collection or of that improvement. And then, uh, the wastewater screenings and IPSTM and conceptual design, we can further look into what is required there, um, and begin preliminary design on that. And then lastly, you know, funding, everyone needs, needs funding. We can start looking at, uh, CWRS funding. Uh, there's other funding options available. Um, with that, there's principal forgiveness, we get on the, the list, uh, never a guarantee, but there could be options for that.
What is CWSR?
It's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
They're like OWRB, there's some different funding similar to what we did the water plant with.
Yeah, so this one's clean water, it's for the wastewater system, drinking water was done for the water plant. That was, uh, of course, happy to, to look into some other funding options, but those are the, the common ones that, that we seed up for these type of projects. With that, just asking questions over the.
Can you go back to the slide with the side-by-side options? I just wanted to look at them. So like.
If you see, if you see on option one over to the right of that one, you see all those lines on the right side of that diagram? That option two eliminates a lot of that line replacement, which a lot of that is in Old Town and.
So you're saying that won't, even though those were on the critical list, that won't, that, that'll help if you did option two instead?
That would eliminate most of those, yep.
Garrett, what would you think the return on investment of that extra eleven million dollars would be? How long would it take for us by not having to do the repair on all those substations?
Just, just a guess, five to seven years probably.
That's all?
That's really good. What about, like, are you taking into consideration all the growth we're thinking is going to happen down Blue Star?
That would, that would allow us to serve.
All that growth that's coming.
More of that area east, yep. Whereas right now you're looking at building multiple additional lift stations just to serve that area.
And we wouldn't have to do that.
Yep. So one of the challenges that we have, especially on the east side, was years and years ago, I'm not sure when they put the line in that basically goes to the east, but there was a point in which we partnered with the Cherokee Nation to upsize the sewer line that runs along Highway twenty to facilitate the Racino so they could be on sewer. So they paid for a portion of that for that upsize, but what we did not do, I say we, and I don't remember what year it was.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So you can't blame Garrett and I, but we're the ones stuck with it. Is that we built.
You're finishing up, this is our team.
We, we, we built a lift station there that the minute that the Racino and QuickTrip got on it, it was at capacity. So we have a sewer line that goes out there, so even if you had additional potential utility customers that would develop on that sewer line along twenty, we can't service the treatment side because we've got a lift station that will not handle that increased volume. So those are the types of things when you look back and, you know, Thomas has done a great job of, and I like this because, uh, we're always trying to impede on the council and the citizens that everything we do is about better defining and refining our processes and efficiencies. It's not about we want to spend more money, but it's how do we spend the money wisely so in the long-term, the people that are sitting in your seats in this seat thirty years from now are going, why am I cleaning up something that should have been done right the first time?
There were a lot of things that were done back fifty years ago that made sense and they were, they were forward thinking, but then you look at a lot of other things and it's like, go ahead and do this now, we'll deal with it later. So this, this is looking forward.
Yeah.
May I say something? We developed.
For this portion, we don't have public comment. Thank you.
The, the regional lift station on the east side and the new influent pump station, a, a big advantage of that is also control over influent flow at the, at the wastewater plant, which we don't have now. There is control, but it's not, it's not as easily handled there at the, at the head of the plant as it would be with those improvements.
And I'm certainly going to be interested in the long-term when we look at real I and I and update because there is a lot of clean storm water, runoff water that gets into our system that we treat. People think that's not a big deal. Well, it is because that's a lot of energy, chemical expense. Doesn't matter if it's clean or not. Once it's in there, it, it utilizes our resources. So even the project on the west side of town where we redid the Heritage Hills, a lot of the issues that we were having over there on I and I were coming from that area, caps off, clean outs, uh, you name it, compromised pipes, manholes that we're allowing groundwater in. So those little things drastically reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration, which then makes the plant more efficient, operate at a cheaper rate, and we're not going through equipment as quickly by, you know, burning through millions of extra gallons of water to treat, so. But it's only, you know, ninety million between the two.
And not to be negative, but this is not including maintenance work in these.
That's correct.
Replacing lines that are, you know, fifty, sixty-year-old clay tile lines that are cracked and.
Or older.
Full of roots and we, we actually just started one of those projects last week and the, the first section of line that we replaced, you know, we found out that there was five, five bellies in it that held more than fifty percent of the.
It's not.
You know, those, those are ongoing issues that we'll be dealing with for fifty years from now on.
If you recall during the town hall sessions last year, you know, we get a lot of conversations surrounding transportation and power, but I made it very clear to everyone that my biggest concern and our biggest liability right now is what we're not seeing in the ground, and that's the sanitary sewer collection system. It's a legitimate issue that we have to start investing in.
Thank you, Thomas.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff reports, Mr. Mayor.
I already did mine.
Current business, do we have a motion to accept the items as per? Second, motion second, any discussion?
Um, just on the, the F portion, the music giving hope, um, I read through that, so we are just investing in, in an event that's coming. Correct. Like we're sponsoring it. On F, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, so years ago we had the Bluegrass and Chili Festival, that was a partnership with, somewhat of a partnership with the Chamber, but also an individual. So this is an event that is formerly, well, these are the people that founded, um, Rock Oklahoma and born and raised, so they're working, they've already started publishing, they have booked, um, Diamond Rio one night, George Thoroughgood, so we'll be out at the expo. Yes, it's a considerable contribution.
You know, I don't know any of those people.
For the first year, it'll be the percentage. They anticipate, you need to leave. I mean, so, uh, with the hope that it grows, now, if, ultimately if it grows to the extent of something like a Rock Oklahoma.
We're in trouble.
We could not facilitate that.
If it gets that big, do we have the sewer capacity to take care of it?
We, we know a lot of people that own porta potties, that's how that would work. So there's some full accounting requirements in that, there's some, it's a very, it's probably a four to five hundred thousand dollar event. The city is sponsoring with some in-kind as well as this council approved in the budget, an expenditure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards that.
Do we think we might see return on investment?
I, I, I mean.
Obviously. We have the tendency.
It's like anything else that you all decide we're going to do, it, we don't know until it happens and there's no, nothing we do is one hundred percent risk adverse. So we have a very strict compliance. We went through a lot of learning curves years before I was here, um, and when I first got on the chamber board years ago and we stopped doing the Bluegrass and Chili Festival, it's frankly because we could not get accounting from, so that is not going to be the case here.
I did see that written in there, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, the MOU is very, very specific. Within thirty days of the close of the festival, we get full accounting, so.
And if it doesn't go well next year?
Well, yeah, we won't.
We'll decide.
It's like anything else. I mean, if we build something that falls apart, we, we're going to build it again, so. Many of you, everybody, each of you were invited last year to an event that, that, where this was rolled out, where they discussed the options of doing this. Not everybody attended, it was at Mr. Jackson's home. Unfortunately, about nine days later he passed away. Music giving hope is his not-for-profit, that he was partnered up with those folks that are putting this on. They're looking to do some community give back from what my understanding is. They'd offered to buy new uniforms for police and fire and I said, we don't, that's, there are other needs in the community, so whether it's still tornado relief victims or animal shelter or, or whatever, um, plus new uniforms for police and fire for ninety of them is about a hundred thousand dollars, so they, they, for not, not all as interested in that as they thought they would be. So we'll see. Um, they're supposed to be releasing to us the entire slate. They've got local and regional bands that they're going to be bringing in as well, um, some of which we know they're right here. Uh, they've told me that they've reached out to Mr. Tankersley who was on the Boys or America's Got Talent or one of them and some Oklahoma City bands, but they've got, and they're working on next year, working on another very well-known band from northeast Oklahoma. I'm not because I'm not, that's their part of the deal.
I, I plan, I'm going to make, to see to the people I don't know who these seniors are.
You would recognize some of the songs. George Thoroughgood is bad to the bone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's his song.
Do you know that song?
That's his song, oh my god. But, but the rest of his band has some more.
Their, their group has communicated with, the group that I've involved in with the tornado relief, and that is, was the reason why part of this was started. So they have communicated that some of the proceeds will come back to help the people that we still have with long-term recovery. We, as in not the city, but individual citizen group.
Okay.
Because people still need houses and houses.
Good to know. I appreciate all the data there we got to read through about, so.
Any other discussion? Did we have a motion second? Okay, call the roll. Felman?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottin?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion possible action on ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-dash-eleven, closing an alley lying north and adjacent to lots eight, nine, and ten in block two of Academy, Academy Edition, in addition to the city of Clamore, Rogers County, Oklahoma. Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Ferry. Um, item four, as well as I believe item six are very similar, um, while one is an alley and one is a street, they're both handled the same way, at least from a legal context. So, um, to kind of speed this up for you guys, basically what the applicant is requesting here is for us to close a section or a portion of the alley, it's not a complete closure, it's about half of it. Um, and the reason for that is there is going to be a, um, formal vacation request to District Court in the future to foreclose our right to reopen this. Um, this is to help spur on some housing development in this area, which we all know that we need. Um, so originally this area was, um, platted as an alley, but it's never really functioned as a platted alley. Um, it's not really been well-maintained, there's a lots of, lots of vegetation and things. There is electric and sanitary sewer in this alley, but just to be clear, this goes for the street closure as well as the alley closure. We will always have the right to maintain, replace, repair, or otherwise operate those public utilities even after vacation. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. So staff did recommend approval of the closure of this alley.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved and second, any discussion? Call the roll. Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottin?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion possible action on emergency clause for item number four aspirated.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion approved and second, any discussion? Call the roll. Felman?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottin?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion possible action on ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-dash-twelve, closing a portion of South Chickasaw Avenue lying between blocks one sixteen and one seventeen in the city of Clamore, Rogers County, state of Oklahoma. Mr. Clifton.
Same song, different verse. I would, I would like to reiterate to the council if I may, um, a couple of things that, I, I know this item had two people speak on it, um, but when we have gone through this comprehensive process for the quiet zones, there are very strict and linear and delineated areas of which there can't be approaches, openings within a certain footage of the crossings when you apply for a quiet zone. So if you recall years and years ago, there were several crossings that were closed along this right-of-way, um, there's U.P. now moving forward that were closed. Joan is not here tonight to give us an update, but that NOI is getting ready to finally be filed, so a lot of, oh, he's hiding.
Oh, he's hiding.
I see there's a podium and aisle, so. So that is a big part of this. I would also like to let the public know and people that are concerned about it, this, the way this is constructed now would never, ever, ever be allowed in today's. It is an absolute nightmare when our fire marshal and fire chief think about the possibilities that could go wrong with that and a few other things. Obviously, this community endured a lot over the last fourteen or fifteen months. That church endured a lot to the tune of several, several million dollars. It was an opportunity with it closed for that remodel, for us to relook at that. It coordinated with the timing of the quiet zone study and frankly, on the advice of the fire marshal who's concerned about a safety issue as well as multiple incidents where it has been struck by other vehicles, um, we did not feel we were in a position to tell the church to remove the bridge. We have water and sewer under that area, they can't do anything as far as permanent structures, so that is why we, we chose this option so we could implement and move forward with a couple of different things.
But we're not going to maintain the streets.
The street will go away.
Yep.
At some point, they'll either put plants there or, or grass.
Cause that is not.
We will maintain the easement, we will vacate the right-of-way, so we will no longer own the property.
Yes.
But we will have a perpetual easement for our water and sewer needs.
I personally object to it on several grounds, and I understand what you're saying about the, the quiet zone and things like that, and I understand what we have to do. Personally, living over there, um, Fifth Street is closed. I can't leave my house and go across the tracks. If I go down to Sixth Street, that's closed. Seventh Street's closed. Eighth, there's only Ninth Street, which means I could all the way down to the, to the post office to get over there. If I leave my house and go on Winona, I look at the church parking lot, that's the only thing I can do, I can right and go downtown, or I can turn left and go towards Prior and the turnpike. If I go up One Street to Chickasaw, I used to be able to sneak cross and get to the tag agency. And in the fourteen months that it's been closed, it has irritated me about thirty times because I try to go that way. Additionally, the reason that irritates me, other than I'm an irritable person sometimes, is that Florence is an absolute nightmare. You cannot cross twenty on Florence. One, because there's traffic. Two, because there's people that have no business driving cars and they cannot make a decision to drive and cross that road. So therefore, not having Chickasaw be able to get to the tag agency or just to cross to get over to Florence and cross to eighty-eight is difficult for someone that lives right over there. I don't like the idea of voting for this without a plan to do something about the fact that Florence is ridiculous. There's, you just, you sit there with lines and lines of cars, people that.
There's, you just, you sit there with lines and lines of cars, people that will not turn right, they won't turn left, they won't go straight. They just sit there and block us all for, for hours.
Well, isn't...
ODOT's going to not put a traffic light at Florence. Right, and I, and, and that's why it makes it more difficult because now you have one less crossing over there. And in order for ODOT to do the improvements that are going to be required on Patty Page, they're going to end up closing this. And then the last reason I object is just frankly because I don't, I don't agree with private business or church or anything just expanding themselves and taking over public property. And so frankly, I wasn't on the city council, but I joked with the mayor earlier that my official title's the black chief of the city council, because I'll say what people want to say. I think the previous city council that ever, in their most remote, stupidest idea, allowed the Baptist church to put a bridge over that thing was wrong. They never should have allowed that encroachment of public property by a church. Additionally, they never should have allowed that bridge to not be tall enough to accommodate any and every truck that ever could have gone through there. Frankly, the thing should have been allowed high enough that a dump truck could go through there with their stupid bucket up, making a dumb mistake. So the whole thing was a backwards decision that should never have been done, but we do have traffic and it, it makes it more difficult.
I see this as a safety concern because I've seen vehicles myself as I'm going down Highway 20, rip through before it was closed 14 minutes ago, rip through, you know, that old Chickasaw and cut, you know, to cut everyone else off to avoid the traffic. And also, there's a spool there. And so there, there, most people are so frustrated because they've had to wait in the traffic that you're, yes, I wish there could be a light there, but they hurriedly get, go underneath the bridge, and there's a spool there, and there's people walking at the church. And most people, they're too frustrated, they even notice when they're speeding through there, and it's a big safety concern.
But there is another street that's getting lost. Isn't the Museum of History expanding? Are they losing a street?
There's nothing happening with the streets.
So that's not taking over where the Gulf, I thought it was kind of going across. Is it just going the, the way it's already at?
It, it's just, it's just the pickleball court. There's no, there's no street work associated with that.
Okay, so it's not taking that street either?
Then we would just isolate Counselor Michael to his house.
Okay, I just, I'm just confused because I, I just don't understand why this affects the, like, I don't understand why this needs to close to, to help with the railroad. I don't understand that part.
Because they have, well, it drives too close to the... It's a safety, so when you, when you take away them, the requirement for them to use the horn, they have considerable safety standards that they meet.
But what?
Counselor, you're asking me to explain the federal rail administration.
I know. I just don't understand what that, if you close it, what that's going to change.
Counselor Bowlby mentioned, and that is that if they have that one that's so close, and there's people like at Florence or whatever, but the ability to have an approach so close and someone to make a hard, fast right and get into that...
In a hurry and get out in front of a train.
It's, it's too close and people can make that hard, quick, fast up, and then it's a danger to the railroad. There was an old approach almost immediately east of the tracks that went into the church parking lot, which by the way, here's the other thing that you all should know. About 90% of that parking lot over there is actually owned by Union Pacific, and they lease it just like we lease the majority of our parking lot out here. So they have considerable say on how that goes. Now, while the street is not in there, the way that ridiculously wide right-of-way right there is at 300 feet as opposed to 90, they do have considerable say. But there is an old approach that when they redid Patty Page slash Highway 20, it's curbed off. But on the church side out of the parking lot, they didn't curb it, but it's grass and median, and there's no entryway, there's no approach or anything. They're making us close that up on the church side of the parking lot for the quiet zone, and it's not even a drive anymore. We have to go in and redo that. So while it is not ideal, and I, I agree completely, and, and I hope that, and I've had conversations with the church, I've had conversations with Garrett, with Kyle, some citizens, it is not ideal. We, we make the best decisions with the information we have, and right now, that's the best decision for us to move forward for quiet zone, for safety of that building, safety of people walking in the building, fire issues. All of those things are considerations, and so that's why the staff is the recommendation that they do tonight. Ma'am, we thank you and anyone else that showed up to speak. Well, I don't think you can, but I was just going to tell you that I am going to make a motion to approve, but you heard my dissent. I can't do anything about it, but it will be beneficial to the city regardless of our complaints.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Item number eight? Are we on seven?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Checked it off already. Discussion, possible action on emergency clause for item number six as printed.
Motion approved.
Motion approved and second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number eight, discussion, possible action on ordinance number 2025-13 as printed. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item before you was a standard rezon request, and as we've discussed many times previously, we need housing in Claremore. That's, that's been very apparent, not only in our 2023 housing study, but just in our engagement of the citizens, people looking for a place to stay here in Claremore. So the applicant has proposed to rezone this from RSF 5 to mixed residential in order to construct some duplexes. This is located at the northwest corner of First Street and Gnome on a little over a third of the neighborhood. You know, looking at, you know, the, the comprehensive plan, this is a neighborhood conservation conversation, and as we've discussed previously, that designation allows zoning to lean into how neighborhoods have evolved over time. And this neighborhood is definitely a blending of single-family and multifamily uses. At a regular meeting of the planning commission on July 1, the planning commission recommended unanimous approval of this item, and staff is also recommending approval of this other change.
Was there anyone present that was against it?
No.
How many mixed residentials are able?
I think the, I think the plan is three duplexes on this, so you have about six units out of it.
And so is there other single-family houses that are going to be there too, or just all duplexes?
It's just going to be duplexes, and there is duplexes in close proximity to this particular site. So again, there is a blending that exists there. There's already kind of a character that's kind of evolved, so.
And per the agenda when we were reviewing, when I was reviewing, it showed that all the houses around the duplexes would be all single, at least surrounding them as single residential houses, but near them is duplexes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kyle, do you know if, are they planning on using the pre-designed, pre-approved?
This particular property is ineligible because the pattern zone is only able to be used in special districts. But we do have design standards that plan to play for multifamily structures outside of the special districts.
Just one block from there, there's thousands, there's a thousand unit, just one block down.
There's a lot of...
They're, they're super quiet, too.
Black sheep and exaggeration.
It's cemeteries right now. Thousands of residents. And they're extremely quiet.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved and discussion? Call the roll.
And they haven't been used the sewers.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Thanks, guys.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Oh, my word!
I've never heard of this. Discussion, possible action while adopting the written city manager performance evaluation provided by the city attorney. Oh, yes, for Adam.
Yes.
Anyone have questions for me about that? I'll say that was, that was the survey in existence years ago. I simply found it while digging through Brian Gillis' file. And so when the topic came up, I shared it. If you all want to adopt that as written, you can. If you want it modified in some way, you can.
So is it a yearly thing? Like, do we, just adopting it, is this setting a precedent for it to be done every year? Or do we need to do more than just adopt it?
Counselor, my contract and my request requires an annual performance evaluation, whether it's formalized or...
I just want to, you know, just play on words sometimes.
And this is the same one that they used last time with the point system.
So we're staying consistent?
Yeah.
Great. Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved and second. Any other discussion? Call the roll. Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned second. Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Air adjourned. I appreciate it. Just for precedence, because I mean, God forbid.